So we can get moving on that.
All right, I'll go ahead and call this regular monthly meeting to order. It is 6:09 PM on May 12, 2020. We'll first start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Latin America, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Dr. Stafford.
Here.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Mrs. Snyder.
Oh, Tracy's muted.
Here.
Tracy, Mrs. Snyder.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Before we get into the first item, I'll just say for those that'll watch the recording, I apologize for us having technical difficulties and not being able to stream this live to Facebook. So I apologize you're not able to watch this live with us, you're just watching the recording. So I apologize for that. So our first agenda item is the approval of in dispense with the reading of the minute from April 7, our virtual meeting, and then April 28, our virtual meeting.
I'll make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the minutes as stated.
I'll second.
Who seconded, I'm sorry.
Tracy.
Tracy? Okay.
Roll, please.
Dr. Stafford.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
And Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
All right, we'll move into the presentations. Mr. Hockenberry cannot join us tonight, so I'm assuming we'll wait on the bullying report for the next meeting, because I don't have the status of that. So we'll go to the next presentation, the new and revised board policies with Mrs. Miller.
Yes, I guess the OSBA had a lot of some new revision or some new policies and a lot of revised recommendations from the OSBA. And a lot of the revisions are with the executive sessions, in the minutes, staff conduct, staff-student relations, career advising, graduation requirements, student absences and excuses, student attendances, hazing and bullying, and then hazing and bullying regulations. And I'm assuming that's what some of what Craig was going to talk about too this evening. You all did get them from Gail a few days ago or last week. And do you guys have any questions on any of those? A lot of it was just different verbiage, crossing out some verbiage and adding different verbiage on it. But I mean, it's quite lengthy and we would be here a while if I went through every single one.
Yeah, I think this is our first review of those. So you know, if you, I mean, from what I saw, there was just a lot of like, just small little figures that was pretty clear that OSBA was just kind of driving those changes.
Right. And then in reference to the graduation requirements, I think, I think Mr. Smiley, didn't he do a presentation on that? Okay, all righty. So.
So these will be set to be on our next agenda for approval. So, so if you have any, any questions or anything like that, we just, just make sure you email and get those questions in, but they'll be set to be approved at our next meeting or our next regular meeting.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that sounds good. Again, I didn't notice anything that was, was really big, big changes.
All right, we'll move into the committee report. So we'll start with the academic curriculum committee with Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. We had a meeting last Friday and it was with Gretchen Blumstrom, Megan Rivet, myself. We talked about the Career Academies and how we want to move forward with those. We've got some established, but we need to kind of reassess where we're at and where we're going with, with those. So Gretchen Blumstrom actually gave me a contact, our contact who's established those for us, Doug. And we've scheduled a meeting for later this week to begin to talk about what that looks like. And so I'll bring that back to the board after I have an opportunity to talk to him and see if the board wants to have him present something or, you know, what his ideas are so that we can continue to move forward. One of the main items that we talked about is now that Ms. Blumstrom's moving on, we were talking about a lot of transition items and how we make sure that nothing gets dropped in, in her, her areas that she's working in. So Career Academies was one of those that she's going to kind of get back to the board to kind of manage while we figure out what we're going to do with her responsibilities. Another item that we discussed was a curriculum update and some potential remote learning plans for 2020 and 2021. Obviously, we don't know what's going to happen. We talked about not wanting to go too far into the planning for next year, because anything we do is probably not going to be what we end up doing, what we think we're doing now. So we're going to start thinking about what we want to do next year, but maybe not get too far down the road into like ordering supplies or ordering things and paying for things, because it could end up being a waste of money. So we just need to kind of plan, but not get too far down the road on those items. And, and he, and she also mentioned that all the principals are involved in these discussions and each school is working on their own individual plans, grade specific is appropriate. Board approval is going to be needed this summer for OTES, the model of 2020-21. We talked about CCIP and the local literacy plan. All of those items are things we're going to have to continue to work on. And obviously, the principals will also be involved in those items. Obviously, Megan will still be here, so she's going to be aware of some of these things. And we're going to have a few more meetings before Gretchen leaves so that we can continue to plan for, for what comes next. There's a lot of stuff out there, a lot of stuff we got to keep moving. So we're going to have to involve the principals and as part of that plan to make sure that nothing gets dropped in the process. That's probably our biggest concern. So that's about all I have.
Any questions for Mr. McDonald? All right, we'll move to board policies with Mrs. Miller, but I have a feeling she just did her presentation.
I did, I can go over it all again if you'd like.
Building and grounds with Mr. Murphy.
We, we have not met for a while. So I guess when things open up, we'll meet again.
Understood. Finance with Mrs. Snyder.
Yeah, Alice and I were finally able to coordinate our schedules and have a Zoom meeting on the 27th of April. We had a discussion about the individuals we might want to participate in the finance committee. I've reached out to a few. I need to follow back up with Alice on a couple of things. I'm having as much luck as I had hoped with recruiting folks to be on the committee. So we might need to brainstorm a little bit on that. We talked about potentially having the meetings earlier in the morning, like, but you know, pre-work, when we can actually get back into a work routine and maybe in 7:00 or 7:30 in the morning. But it'll depend on the flexibility of those involved on the committee. And we also talked about the sort of information that we would want shared with the committee. And one of the big ones was the foundation payment that we received from the state, given all of the press that's been around it lately, and then helping people to understand that five-year forecast. Those were the topics.
Well, if you need any, I mean, if anybody has any good thoughts of maybe some community members that would be good to try to recruit to serve on our finance committee, you know, I think that that would be great to send Tracy if you kind of have some ideas.
Yes.
Just have a bigger pool to recruit from. Have, has there been discussion with the finance committee about any like additional internal members of that committee, like administration, teachers, anything of that sort?
Yeah, we talked about having some of the, the union leaders potentially on that. I've still got to reach out to them. We, we also, we focused on a lot of the community members instead of all of the community leaders, so to speak. And that was the general direction.
How many people were you wanting on this committee?
We talked about up to 10.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
We would have, you know, monthly meetings just to go over and, you know, touch base, check in, see where, where we stood. So I haven't given up hope yet. I'm gonna, I haven't gone into full-on pestering mode yet. So I, I've just been lightly recruiting, so I'll ramp it up.
Well, I think, go ahead, Ryan.
Well, I was just going to ask if, if you had thought about maybe asking the, the teachers' union co-presidents if they might have a math teacher or someone like a representative amongst the teachers? Because I know that those two are involved in so many different meetings, to ask them to come to one.
One more.
But maybe it's an opportunity for them to identify some people who could participate in a board committee like this and maybe have an experience like that.
Yeah, that was, that was going to be my same suggestion, is it doesn't necessarily have to be the leaders of those unions that serve on this committee. I mean, they can kind of delegate or get interest out to, to some other represent, teacher representatives to, to serve on it. So that was going to be my same suggestion, because.
Great suggestion, thanks, guys.
All right, we'll move in. So I have one item on the board president report, and that is to recommend the approval of the memorandum of understanding between TRLSD and the Greater Cincinnati YMCA, specific to TRLSD as a supermember and how it relates to the district's use of the facility for students and staff. Any questions? I'll go ahead and make that motion that we approve. Item A is presented.
I'll second.
Roll, please.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Dr. Stafford.
Yes. So before we go into the superintendent's report, so for those that will watch this recording, so that, that MOU that we just, that we just approved for the YMCA, it pretty much says it in the agenda, but so that's just giving us the, the strong intent to enter into, remember, a membership with the YMCA for the township building, just so our, our sports teams could potentially use the facility, we could use it for academic needs, students could use it and things like that. So that's kind of the basis of that MOU. So nothing, like, nothing concrete, just entering into the conversation. All right, so I'll read through the superintendent's report. Hockenberry isn't there, might have been for the rest of you.
Yeah, I think you're echoing, maybe if everybody, if not everybody goes on mute, might help.
Try that. Okay, all right, that sounds better. All right, thank you. Okay, so I'll just read through the items. So there's 10 personnel items on the superintendent's report. Item A is, sorry, I'll block items A through M. Item A is the resignation letter from Samuel Abbott, teacher, effective the end of the 1920 school year. Item B is a one-year contract for Laura Bramble as teacher, ELA 9 through 12, effective August 1st of 2020 through July 31st of 2021, pending background checks and proper certification. She will be coming in on a BA 150, step three. Item C is a one-year contract for Joseph Drehouse as teacher intervention specialist, 9 through 12, effective August 1st, 2020 through July 31st, 2021, pending background checks and proper certification. And he will come in on a master's 15 degree with step nine. Item D is the resignation letter from Gretchen Blumstrom, Director of Teaching and Learning, effective the end of the 1920 school year. E, the revised contract for Sarah Middleton, teacher, social studies, 9 through 12. She will be going from part-time to full-time position, effective August 1st, 2020. Item F, a limited two-year non-teaching contract for Joe Miners, Cook 2, effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022. G is a limited two-year administrator contract for the following seven individuals, effective August 1st of 2021 through July 31st of 2023, and those seven are listed with their positions. Item H is a one-year contract renewal for Desiree Steffen, is an independent contractor for physical therapy services, effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Item I is additional hours and compensation for the following 13 individuals for summer student services, including ESY program, so extended school year program evaluations for IEP meetings and preschool. The summer services will be implemented at the direction of the Director of Student Services and in compliance with the legal requirements related to COVID-19. And those 13 individuals are listed with their maximum hours also there. Item J, additional hours and compensation for Jack Cutrell, teacher, to monitor and grade online 7th and 8th grade health during summer 2020 at $30 per hour for a maximum of 30 hours. Item K, moving into operational, so three operational items. Item K, the nutritional standards compliance report for 1920, which was included in the board packet. Item L, renewal of an annual agreement with Hamilton County Educational Service Center for the 2021 services included in the board packet. And lastly, item M, revised job description for department chair team leaders, which was also included in the board packet. Questions over any of those? Okay, can I get a motion? Oh, who's in here muted?
There we go. I'll make a motion.
Motion.
Do it, somebody already did it? All right, I'll try this again. I make a motion to approve items A through M. Did I do that right? I feel like I'm echoing, am I echoing now?
I'll second.
Snyder, second. Roll, please.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Dr. Stafford.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
All right, we'll move into the treasures report with Mrs. Gunner.
Okay, before I get into my item to be approved, there's some things I wanted to go over with you. One of the things is, I mentioned in the last board meeting that they were not, what, Hamilton County was not going to delay the second half of the real estate taxes, like other counties are doing it like two and three months. However, they will be delayed, but only by a few weeks. So, and that won't affect us at all. So, and the other thing is, I'm sure everybody's heard about Governor DeWine's reductions. As everybody knows, they're cutting 300 million from the K-12 education and also another 55 million from educational, you know, for other education. And the other education part is, is when you look at our foundation, there's many, many lines on it. And the first half of the lines are, we are on flat funding, but this other education or anything below it, the career tech centers, it's the scholarships in, the scholarships out, so all those, it might affect those. So that's that piece. So, and I also mentioned in the last board meeting that there was a potential, there was going to be a reduction in our state funding, and there is. The amount of the reduction that's going to affect us, and that is for May and June of this year, is going to be $443,875. And that basically is like 8.73% of our foundation that we're getting in fiscal year 20. We've already gotten our payment on the first May. The second payment will come later in the month. It'll start deducting on those, the last three that we get this year, they're going to take out the 443. So with that being said, we also are going to get some care funding that I'd mentioned, and we got those dollars as well. And that care funding is going to be 357,779. So with that, with the reduction of our state funding and getting the, the CARE Act funding in, we still have a net loss of about $86,000. So just keep that in mind. And the other thing is, I wanted to remind everybody at the next board meeting, I will be presenting the five-year forecast. As the process goes, you know, I present it to the board in my presentation, the board takes a vote on it. Once it's voted and passed, I will submit it to the state. I still have not heard what the reduction has, are going to be for fiscal year 21. I know there's going to be some, but we just don't know the percentage. Some districts are just basing it on what they got deducted this year, like we got 8.73. Some districts are going 10%, some districts are going 20%. We just don't know. And right now, my forecast is based on 8.73 for right now, because I'm trying to hold off as long as I can, hoping that we get some numbers. But I hear in a meeting yesterday, we may not know those numbers till after May. I have like two or three scenarios, what I think it'll look like, but unfortunately, I can't send two or three scenarios to the state. I can only send one. So I'm going to use my best assumption, what I know at the time and what I do know now. However, that's, if it changes pretty drastically or significantly, that I think that I need to submit another five-year forecast, I can do that. So I can reinstate my five years if it's that big of a difference. So that's kind of where the reductions are going on right now, and I will keep you apprised as soon as I hear of how much, as soon as I know.
So are you, are you leaning towards filling out the five-year forecast with the 8.73% reduction? Is that what you're leaning towards?
It'll either be that or 10. I mean, I rather, you know, be, I don't want to be too conservative, because I don't want to be surprised. So I'm still kind of holding off, you know, just to look at the numbers. I, I think the forecast is pretty much on its way to be finished, except I still have some more tweaking to do, and I'm concerned about the funding.
Did they, did, did the state give any guidance on what they're, like, what they're kind of telling districts they should? Like, I know in higher ed, I mean, for higher ed institutions, they said every higher ed should just account for 20% reduction in subsidy money. So I didn't know if they were giving K-12 any such guidance.
They have not. And I've been on a couple meetings, two or three meetings since our last board meeting, and Erin Rouse from Ohio Department, you know, ODE, he's been on there and he gave us no indication whatsoever. Just the fact that, you know, we talked about the rainy day fund that the governor has, he's not tapping into that right now, he's not going to tap into it till next year. So, I mean, even if I went 10%, maybe 15, the forecast doesn't look drastically different. It is going to look different from November, what I projected, because, obviously because of COVID-19. But I think, overall, I think the district, the staff and the people have been really, really conscientious about spending. I think that has helped us as well. So hats off to everybody in the community or in the staffing and everything, because everybody's very well aware and conscious. So that part helped too. So as soon as I know, I definitely will, you know, keep you guys apprised. The other thing that I wanted to share is every year we do excess costs. Excess costs basic, you know, we are required to educate non-resident, non-resident students that are in our district with disabilities. And we receive the state and local funding based on that. And these students could be, they can be open enrolled, they can be court placed. I mean, there's various reasons why those students are in our district. So I just want to kind of share a little bit of how, where we've gone. And I can tell you, Megan Rivet, Mrs. Rivet has been doing these for the last, I think her first year was like three years ago. So in the school year of 1718, when she submitted the excess cost, what she does is she works up all the numbers, I approve it and submit it. In 1718, we got $83,979 extra dollars. Now, in 1819, we received $198,046, and that's a 136% increase. And then in 1920, we just got it recently, and it is $291,463, and that's a 47% increase in 136. And what it is, it's compiling a lot of information on what it is costing us to educate the students. And she has come up with a system where she's able to start watching and tracking all the costs, and she does it by student, and that's how we have to submit it. So I just want to say hats off to Mrs. Rivet, she's done an excellent job, and we talk constantly about excess costs and all that. And we will have another revenue coming in, it's called catastrophic. She has also done that. The deadline was April the 30th, which I submitted all those as well. And the difference between.
Alice, you froze up a little bit.
Alice, can you hear us?
Or.
You're back.
The disability is. Okay?
Hey, Alice.
Yeah.
Sorry, can, can we go back a little bit? Because you kind of froze and kind of glitched a little bit. Can you go back and re, just explain catastrophic costs? That's kind of where we left off.
Oh, sure. Catastrophic cost is the cost that Three Rivers, the cost of Three Rivers to educate our resident students, students who live in our district. And what we're allowed to do is apply for any excess cost over $27,000 and some change. And this is, and they, they, and we have to submit it based on category. There's category two, three, four, and five, and six is what we base it on. And it just depends on the disability, where in the category they fall. So, so that, we'll, we'll get some answers, you know, as far as how much. We've done really well in the past. I didn't run those numbers, so I'll just kind of wait till we get our, our numbers for this year, and then I'll present it the same way I did with our excess cost. But, but that is, you know, I just wanted to share a little bit of good news for a change. So we did really well in excess.
Yeah, Alice, if I can just echo, so, I mean, there, you guys have, I mean, obviously, you guys have done a lot of work, both you and Mrs. Rivet, to really kind of streamline that process and, and really make sure that we're, you know, getting as much as we can get, you know, not just for our bottom dollar, but obviously then for our students and what we give back to the students. So, you know, I'd like to thank you and Mrs. Rivet for the work that you guys put in for that, because it clearly is showing that you guys are putting in a lot of work and a lot of time to see that jump in, in revenue that we're getting back to the students year after. So, so thank you for the work.
Thank you for the work this year. But she's done an awesome job. She's able to categorize all the students in a folder. We capture every little dollar that we can that comes through our book. So I'm very grateful for Mrs. Rivet, thank you.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I only have one item, and I would like to block item A. Anybody have any questions about the financials? Any questions or concerns?
Anybody have any questions about the financials? Any questions or concerns?
I'll make a motion. We approve item A, and the treasures report is presented.
I'll second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Stafford?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald, big item B.
All right, item B on the treasures report is recommending the acceptance of the following donations to the Three Rivers Local School District. $3,000 from the Grace Covenant Church for Saturday Meals for Kids. $3,000 from the Faith Fellowship Church for Saturday Meals for Kids. $400 from Children's Hunger Alliance for Food Distribution Program. And $150 from Mrs. Jerry Crowe and Ms. Carol Hoffman for Food Distribution Program. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the following, those following donations.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I think Stephanie won.
I won.
Need a buzzer.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Stafford?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
All right, thank you for all of those donations. I know it's, it's made a huge difference in many of our families' lives at the moment, brought them some happiness, so we can't thank you all enough for such generous donations. All right, let's move into the two discussion items. So the first one is the strategic plan, and obviously, we're still on hold until we can get back to some, some normalcy for that. So then we'll just move on to item B, the Community Engagement Committee, with Mr. McDonald, Mrs. Snyder. Do you have an update?
We had to move our meeting till tomorrow. We were going to meet last week. But tomorrow, our meeting will be about, again, the Community Engagement Committee is meant to engage our community. It's literally to start a conversation with our community about things that are going on, needs in the community, making sure we have contacts, people understand what the school district's doing, making sure that everybody's okay, trying to understand who's in our community and what their needs are, and trying to just facilitate a conversation between the district and people out in our community. We are in the process of compiling names for outreach purposes. And so that's the, the major thing that we're doing. And tomorrow, Corky O'Callahan, our consultant, will be bringing some materials to us to look over about how, how to have those conversations and to engage the community in those conversations. Tracy, if you have anything to add?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Right. And I know the last time we talked, you guys were compiling that list of, of people to engage. So just to reiterate what we talked about last meeting, when you get that list, if you could share it with the rest of the board, just so we can review for any holes or gaps. But I, I appreciate the work for that. I think it's important that we're, we're hearing from our community and many different aspects of what they need. So I think it's a good start to, you know,
Definitely.
some productive conversation, so. All right, thank you for that update. We don't have a need for executive session this evening, so as of, anything else for the good of the order? No? Okay, so as of 6:44 PM, we are adjourned.